7 o'clock for the March 7, 2023, Bucyrus City Council Regular Meeting. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Potter.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
Young.
Here.
You have before you the minutes of the February 21, 2023 Regular Council Meeting Minutes.
I'll make a motion too.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Potter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granted permission for visitors to speak. If you'd like to speak, please come to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Carolyn Shireman. Bucyrus, I'd like to address this to the mayor if he would look at me, please. Thank you. For years, the citizens have paid your salary for an agenda we did not want. We voiced our concerns through media, through conversation to you and council. None of you listened. You have led our city to ruin with your agenda. Now you need to cover your mistakes, and you are using our safety forces to do it. You're pitting them against each other. If you persist with this ridiculous plan, I will be forced to a plan to recall you as mayor. Citizens have had enough of you and this council. I am thinking that signatures will not be hard to get. Respectfully, Carolyn Shireman.
What was your address, dear? 1065 East Bill Avenue. Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Greg White. I live at 1125 Hillcrest Drive. I hope this council is ready tonight to veto the mayor's ridiculous acts that he's doing. I hope that the 10 days are up. I think it's time to put forth what needs to be put forth and end this crazy, bizarre attitude by our mayor. Thank you.
Zion Hickman, 849 South Sandusky Avenue. On February 21, during the scheduled council meeting, there was an emergency vote held to determine whether or not the police department deserved a $1.50 raise for $75,000 a year. The second round of votes, the votes no from council members Aaron Sherrick, Terry Spiegel, and Dan Wireball resulted in the failure -- I can't talk -- resulted in the failure of this legislation. Not only was that a slap in the face to our police department, but that also sent the message to the people that giving the police department what they need to invite and keep new recruits to keep the city safe is not the priority of these three members. Sherrick mentioned that having the levy, mentioned that not having the levy was the reason for her no vote, and to that, if the levy was so important, we should be doing what we can to endorse it or at least advertise it. I have been seeing library levy signs pop up all over town. I'm sure we could figure something out to get it out there. Also, two weeks ago, we also had the committee meeting where the mayor made it very clear having a splash pad put in a non-operating pool is more vital than our safety forces. He said, and I quote, "The splash pad is in the best interest of the children of this city." The Finance Committee even went as far as to appropriate the budget for this. Splash pad is not in the best interest of the children. It's in the best interest of the children -- it's not in the best interest of the children. It's in the best interest of the mayor for his image. A majority of us are here tonight because the mayor has cemented his position in making the splash pad a priority by vetoing the emergency legislation to strip the safety director of his power to cut our EMS staffing in half. We would all like to see the council make a good decision tonight with a motion, but we are also very skeptical because of the recent decisions that were made two weeks The safety of the citizens should always be the top priority. This council and this administration are playing with the lives of the citizens. Your decisions and enactions that are being made tonight are going to determine whether or not people get help in a timely fashion or they die waiting for help. The people deserve leadership, not a circus. Thank you.
Michael France, 1013 High Street. I'm not a man of many words, but those men right there dressed in blue that helped support the firefighter, that helped support the emergency squad and whatnot, they deserve our utmost respect. And by cutting their forces down, it puts a strain. Look at retail. You cut staffing at retail because no one wants to work at retail. It goes -- it goes all -- nobody wants to work in retail. Just support the firefighters. Thank you.
My name is Colin Finnegan. I'm a non-resident Shelby firefighter. Mr. Mayor, if you recognize me.
I recognize you.
Yes, I was one of your second hires here.
I remember you.
Yep. When you guys were taking over.
Welcome back.
Yes. When you guys were taking over EMS. I'd like to thank you personally for giving me that opportunity. You guys were one of the few departments that was willing to put me on before I even for sure had my medic. With that being said, my time at Bucyrs, while it was short, it was a little bit over a year. I came to know kind of the citizens, kind of to recognize what your guys' needs are as far as fire and EMS. In that time that I worked, when we took over EMS officially, I would say last year, roughly about the time I left was in August, I had worked close to 500 hours in overtime. While paychecks were good, my intentions were never to get rich off of the city. It was to provide good service for the citizens of Bucyrs. I hold nothing as far as family or friends over here as to be lost with losing manpower from the fire department. I'm here today because I recognize what the city needs as manpower. You have a fire department that's providing EMS services. You guys have a great deal of fire suppression, and you guys have a great deal of EMS service with six guys on. Going down to four, I personally know, is not doable. With the amount of townships that you've taken on and just the city alone, I can tell you that working over those 500 hours of overtime in just my normal shifts, that four people can't do it. I understand that it's your job to watch over the city's finances, and that's got to be taken into account, but we can't be putting a price on family members. We can't be putting a price on friends and family. I think we really need to look at what the citizens want and take that into account and not put a dollar sign on daughters, sons, grandparents. We can't be going, sorry, you weren't the first or the second person to call. I can tell you multiple times where I went out personally, and if it wasn't for that engine being able to come out and assist us, we would have been in some serious trouble. So I just ask you to take that into some serious thought when going down to four. Six is bare minimum. Thank you.
Kurt Van Kouser, 616 Prospect. I think it's appalling that in the last four years, this council has faced two override veto votes, and it pertains to the fire department. There should not be any -- we need to take care of the safety forces first. The last override veto was to veto an application for a grant to fund the fire department. This is -- I'm going to steal Mr. Castor's line here. This is total ludicrous. So I support overriding the veto, and I hope that there's five of you sitting there that are willing to do that tonight. And Mr. Myers, I totally agree with him that the solution here is not to reduce staffing. You need to increase staffing. If you have overtime that is this -- if your overtime is going on this much, you need to add another guy or two entry-level positions, call it a flex shift or something, to where they're filling in for all these guys that are, when they're taking their days off and stuff, creating the overtime. Thanks for letting me talk.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
On behalf of the citizens that I was elected to represent and through the Ohio Rise Code 731.27, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider ordinance 12-2023.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Potter. Roll call, please. McKeever.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Wireball.
Yes.
Potter.
Yes.
Sherrick.
Yes.
Spiegel.
No.
Young.
Yes.
Madam President, may I ask a question of the law director to answer some questions that I've had from the public? Procedurally, this is something we don't do very often. Can you clarify, in an instance like this, does that ordinance take effect then immediately and when we'll be back up to staffing six tomorrow? Is the question I've asked.
Not so sure it would take effect immediately. I think that it's more complex than simply having council pass that. As I indicated to council, there's case law out there which indicates that council could pass staffing issues, council could pass mandatory minimum things, but then it falls within the sound discretion of the administration at the end of the day as well. So I think that there's still some question as to the administration's intent. But yeah, I mean, I think council has made it clear that they intend to have six people minimum staffed at all times. So I guess that's a roundabout way to answer that.
Thank you.
But yeah, I mean, it passes effective immediately. It was an emergency.
Anything else for the law director on this issue? All right. Moving on to communications and petitions.
This is from the Planning Commission to Bucyrs Council President. The Bucyrs City Planning Commission met on Monday, February 27, 2023, and voted in favor of the proposed addition of Section 1187.07 entitled portable shipping containers, storage containers, and similar objects. The proposed legislation that was approved by the Bucyrs Planning Commission is enclosed. Please note that this version is a revised version of the proposed ordinance 07-2023 that had a first reading on February 7, 2023. I request that a public hearing be scheduled and held in accordance with Chapter 1145 of the Bucyrs zoning code. Sincerely, Greg Travis.
May I have a motion to refer the letter to Platting?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Standing Committee reports. Platting.
I have nothing at this time.
Public lands and buildings?
Nothing at this time.
Health and safety?
No report.
Finance?
No report.
Economic development?
No report.
Service?
No report.
Traffic Commission?
Okay.
Report to city officers. Mr. Mayor.
No report tonight.
Thank you. Okay. Just the state of the city?
Yeah.
That you submitted?
Sure.
Okay. May I have a motion to accept and file?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. All right. Safety Service Director Wagner.
Thank you, Madam President. Need to refer the Northwest Trump Sewer to Service and Finance Committee. Norfolk and Southern, as you know, we had problems with some concrete falling. Their crew came and pulled the rest of the loose off, and as far as I know, they told me a subcontractor would be here in the near future to get the problem fixed, but they have not given me the dates yet. The former Rush Building on Bill Avenue just got leased out to Mercury Inc. is another broadband company coming to Ohio. We have hired two employees to fill openings in our service garage. The compost site is now open 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, seven days a week. 2023 mill and pave projects are out to bid, and we'll open those bids on March 16 at 10:00 AM. 2023 material bids are out to bid, and we'll open those on March 14 at 10:00 AM. We signed contracts on Friday with Driven Escavating for the Nevada Waterline project. Should be starting in two to three weeks. We had a meeting with Columbia Gas and their subcontractor Miller Pipeline. Will be here the beginning of April on East Mansfield Street from Penn to east of Walmart, replacing a gas main and some service lines. They will be controlling traffic, and they'll be down to one lane, and they'll be here for about 30 days. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to send the Northwest Trump Sewer to Service and Finance?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Young. One of these days, I'll be able to distinguish between the two of you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. We have -- Auditor Lewis?
The February.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I skipped Mr. Gerner. Sorry. Mr. Gerner, do you want to make a report?
No reports tonight.
That was easy. Back to you.
The February income tax revenue comparison tables, as well as the tally to budget for funds tables, are attached to your council package. If you have any questions, feel free to ask or come to me after the meeting. And I also just wanted to reiterate that the city income tax office will have extended hours during the month of April. The extended hours can be found at the city of Bucyrs' Facebook page, and we want to urge citizens to utilize this time to file your taxes to avoid late filing fees because we like your money, but we like you more.
We have no treasures report. The police chief report is in your packet. You have a motion to accept and file? So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Chief Schwimley's report is in there as well. And since he's here, does anybody have any questions for him? May I have a motion to accept and file? So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. May I have a motion to accept the city officers' reports as presented? So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting visitors' input on reports, standing in special committees and city officer reports? Anybody like standing?
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Bucyrs. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think you had a motion to accept the committee reports.
There were no committee reports.
Okay.
I mean, do I accept none? I just assume since there were no reports to accept that there's no motion to be made. Mr. Law Director?
That's how we've done it.
How we've been doing it all.
You haven't had a motion to accept?
Anytime we don't have a report, we never made a motion to accept them.
Okay, then I apologize for coming up and asking that question.
No, it's good to know.
Here we go, President. IFF, Bucyrs firefighters, local 1120. Just want to thank council. You guys made a hard decision, and I think a lot of you guys took in consideration the public and the citizens, and then putting them first and foremost was the right thing to do. This has nothing to do with the fire department or safety forces and the citizens that put you where you're at today. And on behalf of them, the firefighters, and the guys that have shown up for support. Thank you.
I need a motion and a second pursuant to Rule 111.19, to suspend the rules of council, specifically Rule 111.11, to allow for legislation pertaining Resolution 211-2023, local Board of Tax Review, and Ordinance 15-2023 splash pad to be brought before council as a whole without necessity of first origination in committee.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. Spiegel. Roll call, please. Wireball.
Yes.
Spiegel.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
McKeever.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Potter.
Yes.
Sherrick.
Yes.
Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Ordinance number 14-2023 amending and supplementing ordinance number 66-2022, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2023 by appropriating from unappropriated waterwork funds the sum of $7,000 to the other uses line item within the Waterworks Administration category within the Waterworks subparagraph, further appropriating unappropriated sewage disposal funds the sum of $7,000 to the other uses line item within the Sewage Disposal Administration category within the Sewage Disposal subparagraph, further appropriating from unappropriated solid waste management funds the sum of $7,000 to the other uses line item within the Solid Waste Management Administration category within the Solid Waste Management subparagraph, and finally appropriating from the unappropriated storm water utility funds the sum of $7,000 to the other uses line item within the Storm Water Administration category within the Storm Water Utility subparagraph and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 15-2023 amending and supplementing ordinance 66-2022, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2023 by appropriating from unappropriated general funds the sum of $90,000 to the contractual services line item within the lands and buildings category within the Program 7 General Government subparagraph and declaring an emergency. Resolution number 208-2023, giving consent of the city of Bucyrs for the Ohio Department of Transportation to remove snow and ice and use snow and ice control material on state highways inside the city corporate lemons and authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Transportation for snow and ice removal and giving consent of the city of Bucyrs for the Ohio Department of Transportation to perform certain maintenance and/or repair on state highways inside the city corporation and authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with the State of the Ohio Department of Transportation for certain maintenance and/or repairs. Resolution 209-2023, a resolution of the city of Bucyrs Council strongly urging the Ohio Governors and members of the Ohio General Assembly to restore the local government fund to pre-recession levels and declaring an emergency. Resolution number 2010-2023, authorizing and directing the Bucyrs City Auditor to draw warrant or warrants in the amount of $611,380. Let me say that again, okay? $611,380 for Phase 2 of the Stetser Road 602 Waterline Project to the Crawford County Commissioners for the appropriate appropriations and declaring an emergency. Resolution number 211-2023, pursuant to Section 189.18 of the codified ordinance of the city of Bucyrs, the Bucyrs City Council hereby appoints the following individuals to the local Board of Tax Review, Lisa Whited, presently residing at 1135 Fremont Street, Bucyrs, Ohio, and Larry Shutler, presently residing at 357 West Southern Avenue, Bucyrs, Ohio, to a two-year term beginning March 7, 2023 and ending March 6, 2025 and declaring an emergency.
Do I have a motion to accept these as the first reading? So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granted permission for anybody in the general public who wish to have their comments or input on the legislation being wrote for first time.
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Bucyrs. First, I have comments on Ordinance number 15-2023, appropriating from unappropriated general funds the sum of $90,000 to be loaned to Bucyrs Kwanis for the splash pad project. The Finance Committee discussed and requested legislation for the $90,000 appropriation at its February 23 meeting with Myers voting no. However, no request for referral to the Finance Committee of the $90,000 appropriation was made at council. Also, the February 23 Finance Committee meeting agenda did not recite appropriation for discussion. As previously stated at other committee meetings, if the topic is not on the agenda, it cannot be discussed. Tonight, a motion was made, seconded, and passed to suspend the rules of council, specifically Rule 111.11, correctly known as codified ordinance Section 111.11, which allows for legislation to be brought before council as a whole without going through committee in order to expedite the passage or adoption of ordinances and resolutions. Section 111.11 also states this practice shall not be abused. Since the splash pad has been ongoing for over 13 months, I question why this ordinance is now considered an emergency. With council's use of codified ordinance Section 111.11 at least seven times during its current term -- that's not what I want to say. Well, during its current term, it has used this section seven times. I am of the opinion that this section is being abused in order to correct errors done by committees. Based on the above, this ordinance should be withdrawn and referred back to committee. Based on the above, this ordinance should be withdrawn and referred back to committee. However, if you choose to continue on with the legislation, please note that Section 1 states in air that Ordinance number 54-2021, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2022. It should correctly state that Ordinance number 66-2022, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2023. Secondly, my comments are on Resolution number 211-2023, appointing two individuals to the Local Board of Tax Review for a two-year term. At the October 4, 2022 council meeting, Auditor Schiffer referred to the Finance Committee the need for an income tax board of appeals consisting of two members appointed by council and one member appointed by the administration. The Finance Committee met and discussed the matter on October 6, November 2, and December 8. However, at the February 21, 2023 council meeting, the Local Board of Tax Review, also referred to as Income Tax Board of Appeals, and Bucyrs City Income Tax Review Board, was referred to the Economic Development Committee. The Economic Development Committee met and discussed the matter on February 23, requesting legislation approving the appointments of three named individuals to the Local Board of Tax Review. At no time was discussion held by the committee on the two-year terms of the appointed individuals. In reviewing today the city's website, I found that despite one member dying on November 17, 2016, and a second member dying on August 31, 2021, their names remain as current members of the Bucyrs City Income Tax Review Board. Since these vacancies were never filled within the required 60-day period per Codified Ordinance Section 189.18, I have to question why this legislation is being considered an emergency. Also, the website states in air that the board has no terms, and new members are appointed when one resigns or passes on. Council is again using Codified Ordinance Section 111.11 to allow for legislation to be brought before council as a whole without going through committee in order to expedite the passage or adoption of ordinances and resolutions. I find again that this section is being abused. Based on the above, this resolution should be withdrawn and referred back to proper committee. Thank you.
I have a question. We have a tax review board?
Yep.
We do.
But we were told that we had to create a tax review board?
We had to add people.
No, that's not the wording that was used. It was, "We needed one, we didn't have one, and we had to create one."
Well, so Richard Corry was on it, and he died in 2016. I'm not sure which one died in 2021, but two of them have passed away, and the other was, I think, not available. So it's already created by statute, we just had to put people in it. And so the-
Sounds like Doris to me.
Joyce was unable to be appointed by council, because Joyce previously was employed by the city, and she can't be appointed to... As one of the council's persons, so she would have to be appointed by the mayor, which left Ms. Whited and Mr. Shutler to be appointed by city council. But I mean, I forget exactly why we had this come out of as council as a whole. There is some-
Because it wasn't through finance, it was through economic development.
Great.
Can we refer that back to committee for Thursday?
Sure.
To the appropriate-
Both of them?
I say to the appropriate committees. They both go to finance?
Both of them? Sure. Question?
Yeah, let's refer both of them back. I make a motion, too.
All right, so the tax reviewer needs to go back to finance? And Ordinance 15-2023, also back to finance?
I think that's where it was supposed to be, was finance, and then it ended up in economic development.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick to refer both of these pieces of legislation back to finance.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. All right. Give me just a moment here. Anybody else would like to speak on the legislation? Consideration of proposed legislation for the final time.
Ordinance 05-2023 repealing in its entirety Chapter 909, entitled Trees, under Title 1, entitled Streets and Sidewalk Areas, under Part 9, entitled Streets, Utilities, and Public Services Code of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Bucyrs, and replacing it with revised Chapter 909, entitled Comprehensive Tree and Planting Plan, under Title 1, entitled Streets and Sidewalk Areas, under Part 9, entitled Streets, Utilities, and Public Services Code of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Bucyrs, at sequence at set forth herein. Ordinance 06-2023, amending and supplementing Section 1301.08, entitled Building Setback Requirements, under Chapter 1301, entitled Building Permits, under Title 1, entitled Building Standards, under Part 13, entitled Building Code of the Codified Ordances of the City of Bucyrs.
I have a motion to accept these as final reading.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting public to speak on the legislation read for the final time. Referring back to originating committee, proposed ordinance 05-2023, refer back to health and safety. Proposed ordinance 06-2023, refer back to plating. Proposed ordinance 14-2023, refer back to finance. Proposed Resolution 208-2023, refer back to finance. Proposed Resolution 209-2023, refer back to finance. And proposed Resolution 210-2023, refer back to finance. Committee report on pending legislation, finance?
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 14-2023, appropriations for Enterprise Fund. Finance is favorable to proposed Resolution 208-2023, the ODOT removal, ice and snow. Finance is also favorable to proposed Resolution 209-2023, the Ohio Municipal League. And finance is favorable to proposed Resolution 210-2023, the Stetser Waterline.
Fulton Safety is favorable to proposed ordinance 5-2023, which replaces Codified Ordinance 909.
Plating is favorable to proposed ordinance 06-2023, the change for the Codified Ordinance 1301.08.
Under consideration of pending legislation, Ordinance 05-2023... Excuse me. Sorry.
Need my water?
No, I don't care. Thank you.
That went through, that's on emergency. Do you need a motion to adopt?
Yes. So moved. Thank you.
Second.
You're welcome. I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKeever. Roll call?
Sherrick?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
If I could ask which motion, or which one are we adopting?
05-2023, the trees.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Ordinance 05-2023 is duly adopted. May I have a motion for Ordinance number 06-2023, the change in the Codified Ordinance 1301-8?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Wireball.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance 06-2023 is duly adopted. Ordinance number 14-2023 appropriations to the Enter... Okay, never mind, I need to back up. Ordinance 14-2023 appropriations Enterprise Fund, for these second and third readings of proposed ordinance 14-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel.
McKeever?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 14-2023?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel.
McKeever?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes. Ordinance 14-2023 is duly adopted. Resolution 209-2023, the Ohio Municipal League letter. For the second and third readings of proposed Resolution 209-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Ms. Sherrick.
McKeever?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 209-2023? So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKeever.
Sherrick?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Resolution 209-2023 is duly adopted. Resolution 210-2023, Stetser Waterline, for the second and third readings of proposed Resolution 210-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel.
McKeever?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 210-2023?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Young.
You're going to dis-.
McKeever?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Resolution 210-2023 is duly adopted. Do we have any old or unfinished business to be brought before council? Do we have any newer miscellaneous business? We have anyone missing? We have referral to the Planning Commission letter for the storage containers to plating. May I have a motion?
We already did that.
We already did it?
We did the motion?
I didn't mark it on here.
Yeah. We did that during his report.
That's right, we did. Okay, I've got it written down then. Does anybody have any other referrals?
Oh, the two that we referred them back.
Back to finance, as well as the tax review board to finance.
That's the two pieces of legislation that I have already?
Yes.
Yes, both to finance. Yes, got that. Anything else? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Ms. Sherrick. We are adjourned at... 7:40.